Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board Meeting of USD 290. It is May 10th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order and have a roll call. Linda Alderman?
Present.
Chris Cunningham?
Present.
Julie D'Andrio?
Present.
Susan Moore?
Present.
She's here virtually with us. Shanda Olmstead?
Present.
Melidia Payne?
Present.
And Harold Wingert is absent but may be joining us in a bit. He was attending one of his children's events. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. That passes 6-0. And there is a consent agenda. Nothing out of the ordinary on that. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes 6-0 as well. We do not have any comments from the public this evening. But we do have a presentation this evening. Amanda Steinball and her students are coming to present on the Robotics Club and give us an update on that. Welcome.
Good evening, guys. I'll let the students introduce themselves and they're going to talk a little bit about you, what we learned this season and things they experienced.
Hi, I'm Jamie Lynn Witten.
Hi, I'm Jaslyn Reidner.
I'm Alex Chitster. I'm the captain of the team.
And go ahead and step right up to that microphone so that we can hear you really well and the people listening in can hear you well also.
So this is a project that the Robotics Class has been working on. This is the first year of the Robotics Class and this is, or it has started, yeah, started at the beginning of second semester. We built two of these. They are just hydraulic arms. So using simple syringes and some balsa wood, we have built things. Kind of heard it here. You want to lightly push on some of those and pull them? Yeah, might be able to set up here.
Move the mic.
I apologize. There we go. So just simple, using simple syringes, we can get it to move using different movements. And it's all hydraulics, so.
Oh, that's great.
Yep. It's a fun project that we had worked on. It's kind of our introduction into hydraulics, something that we would like to then push on forward soon to our actual robotics designs.
This is our scoop that we made for our innovation, our innovation project for robotics, our first robotics. Yeah, sorry. And this was made to just, oh, gosh, sorry. We made this for...
I forgot what the challenge was called.
Sorry.
I'm just nervous.
I've been playing.
You're fine, take your time.
What is this for, Alex?
For robotics innovation design.
Yes, sorry. First robotics innovation design. We made a scoop for pet food. So pretty much it's, we categorize cats and dogs and the weight and obesity of certain animals because we found that as a problem, obesity, in a lot of animals. So we found a way to make a scoop that will help families across the world, help slow down the amount of obesity in our animals.
How does it work?
So there's a different, there's two slots. And you just take this out whenever feeding your dogs to change it to a different size.
Nice. So I assumed you printed that on a 3D printer?
Yes, this was a 3D printed design.
Very good.
So that was a joint effort between the Robotics Class as well as the Robotics Team.
Okay, good.
I am holding dodgeball. Okay, so what these were for, our robot that we built, we had to shoot balls into like a little, a huge scorey little thing. And we just drop them in, the ball goes whoosh. But yeah, that's pretty much what these are for.
And we do a video if you would like to see that.
That would be great. We would really enjoy that. And for people that are watching at home, you may not be able to see this, but you can follow the link to view it directly that way. That's really neat. Thank you, guys, so much for coming to tell us about this. We appreciate it.
I'm going to add one thing. Kind of how Alex had mentioned that the scoop was a combined effort between the students and the class and the extracurricular activity, that was a large reason why we had come to you about adding robotics as a class. A lot of high schools do that. It is extremely time-consuming to be a part of the club. And so it does allow other students who are maybe more active because they do different sports and activities that they can't spend a lot of time after school. It still allows them to be a part of that process and really do all the problem-solving activities that they do through robotics during the day and then as well after school.
And I am so glad you have that space to do that in because years ago, you would have been doing that in the hall in front of the library.
No, and Mrs. Steinball does a great job with the kids. And that video you watched, normally they would get to go to a big arena and they would get to do the robotics competition in person, which is extremely exciting. I only got to see videos the first year because I was out of town over spring break when they had gone. But that monstrosity, they had to build and construct that. And so they collaborated with Mr. Kotchik and his Wood Students to build the design to all the dimensions. And we had to be able to house that in order for the students to participate. So we are very fortunate that we had the space to do that. I know Ms. Steinball shared stories with me. Some schools were having to dismantle it and put it in a gym or like put it in the wrestling room after the wrestlers left. And our kids were fortunate enough. It was constructed. Our maintenance guys helped make sure that it was sturdy and then it was able to be there throughout the season. So they were pretty excited. But these students do a phenomenal job, Mrs. Steinball does. And it's been a really cool addition to the high school. And I just want to thank them for all of their hard work and dedication towards the robotics.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you. I know, I think Mrs. Steinball is going to speak to us a little bit about the food pantry project.
So I just wanted to come in front of you guys this evening. Because of COVID last year, we didn't get to have a meeting at the end where I got to share the wonderful news about the food pantry. But for those that are listening online too, the food pantry is a cooperation between the Franklin County Food Policy, the ECAN, and then Ottawa High School. So what we do is about every other week, we deliver foods to delivery spots across the county. And so that way individuals that maybe have trouble with transportation or work hours, maybe an issue there, they have better access to food across the county, which I want to share a couple of numbers with you before. Dean, hang on one second. So in 2018, right before when we got approved to do this, there was a survey sent out to members of Franklin County. And 3,357 individuals, not, I'm not saying families, just individual people had claimed on the survey that they struggled getting nutritious food to their table at least twice a week. So that number's pretty dramatic. It's heartbreaking if you think about it. But since we've started the food pantry, that number has actually decreased by 700 people across our county. So I wanted to make sure that you guys understand that the cooperations that we've designed and that we've built through this project at the school, it's really making a huge impact in our county. So I want to say thank you for that. I mean, it gives me goosebumps when I think about it. So I mean, it's, not only are we doing good things in the school, but we're also reaching our community. So thank you for helping with that. So Dean, I was going to kind of scroll through here. I just want to share a few numbers with you. Since the beginning of our food pantry, our first delivery was in July of 2019. Again, because of COVID, I'm kind of smashed in two years of data together for you. And we have served 13,491 individuals. And that is fantastic. And that number grows every other week. So it's, we're happy that we can help. In addition, we've served six different townships across our county. Those include Wellsville, Ottawa, Pomona, Princeton, Richmond, and...
Williamsburg.
Williamsburg, yeah, thank you. So those towns get food because of some of the work that we do at the high school. On a consistent basis, we have about 17 volunteers throughout the community that come to OHS or help in some way or another, eat every other week. And then over the past two school years, we've had about approximately 1,450 students that have had their hands in helping provide meals or coming up with recipes or donations. So that in itself is astronomical and I'm happy to provide those numbers for you tonight. And then the last thing is our outreach. We've created 15 different partnerships with organizations or businesses or individual families throughout the county during this time. So as that grows larger, we hope to impact even more people. So yeah, any questions for me?
Fantastic. Thank you so much for sharing this.
Yeah, it's amazing. I'm so happy that OHS and the school board, I mean, when I came on, that you guys agreed to do that because we are really truly making a difference in people's lives. And that's what it's all about. So thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. And thank you.
Theater next, right?
Yes, is that going to be you?
Yes, it's going to be myself and Alex, yes.
Okay, great.
And just on the food pantry too. So our culinary arts students play a huge role with the food pantry. They are constantly coming up with recipes, sometimes making homemade salsa to send home in the packages and the boxes to families. And there are just a plethora of students across all of our activities and organizations that are volunteering with Mrs. Steinball and Mrs. Cohen on a bi-weekly basis. It's been really cool to kind of just see that come to play. And it's been really nice to see them be able to sustain it in some fashion throughout COVID because more now than ever before, our families in our community and surrounding areas needed that extra assistance. And so I have Alex Chitster again. He is a man of many hats. And so Mrs. Miller apologizes. She had an emergency at her house and she couldn't stay this evening. And then the student who was supposed to be here called me frantically because she got sent home sick from school today. And so Alex is kind of stepping in for the two of them, but he just wants to share a little bit about what they've been doing and preparing for theater. And then last year, we were able to start a thespian society, which is a new kind of club and organization at the high school that allows our theater students to not only feel a part of something, but also kind of earn some rewards and recognitions for being active participants in our plays and just different activities throughout the year. They have some community outreach that they do through thespian society. And so that was a really exciting addition last year. And I'm going to let Alex tell you a little bit about both those things.
So apologies, I don't have anything too prepared. But so the easiest way for me to explain, because it's also something I'm part of, but the easiest way to kind of explain what thespian is like kind of internationally is very similar to NHS. So it is an honor society for people who are in theater. So it's off a points system. So you have to earn at least, I believe, six points to join. And that's usually having at least one role in a show or running tech or being backstage for two shows. And then once you join, you get a few different rewards and stuff like that. And then once you join, you are a part of the society for life. Though those points do continue growing. So once you reach, I believe it's 60, then you become a honors thespian. And so I am one of those. I have been a part of shows since my freshman year and I've only not been a part of one of them. And so once you do that, then it gets you a few other benefits. I can't remember what those are off the top of my head. And then once you reach, I believe it's 120, then you get international. And that's just, it's more benefits from there. One of the good things about NHS, or thespian society, is it gives a whole bunch of scholarship opportunities for students who would like to continue in theater or who decide to continue theater in their college life. So I hope to continue theater in my college life and I hope to also get some scholarship money for that. We have done a lot to kind of help our community a little bit. One of the big things that we've done both years so far is making blankets for people. That's something that we've done both years and we plan on hopefully continuing for as long as we possibly can. And that's kind of about it. Do you have any questions?
I think so. Thank you very much for sharing that information. I didn't either.
Can you kind of tell us what's going on in the video?
Yep, so we have a video that we're going to show you. Is there just the one? Okay, so these are different clips from what we've been doing so far with our shows. So I believe all except for one part of it, though I may be wrong, is of the kind of upcoming show, sort of, Midsummer's Night Dream. It's a Shakespeare play. It will be played at the Semester Showcase for the theater. So let you watch.
Thank you. And again, if you're watching from home and can't see this on the camera, you can follow that link that's provided in the agenda.
Do not like them, so you say. Try them, try them, and you may. Try them, and you may, I say. Sam, if you will let me be, I will try them. You will see. Say, I like green eggs and ham too. I like them, Sam Iam, and I would eat them on a boat. And I would eat them with a torch. And I would eat them with the, in the rain. And I would eat them in the dark. And on a train and in a car and in a tree. And they're so good, so good, you see? So I will eat them in a box and I will eat them with a fox. And I will eat them in a house and I will eat them with a mouth. And I will eat them here and there. I'd say I would eat them anywhere. I do not like green eggs and ham. Thank you. Thank you, Sam Iam. Yay!
So I have a short little thing that Miller would like me to read off just to kind of explain that video. So the first clip was part of Midsummer's Night Dream. It had some students like Lillian Dury, Justin Dennison, Josiah Yon, and Raylan Hill. So this part is the result of Puck's mistake, putting the love potion onto the wrong lover's eyes. So that's kind of the main problem of the show. What makes it a farce is that it's a mistake that was made, the thing gets blown way out of proportion and then has to be reeled back in. The second clip was also part of Midsummer's Night Dream. And this had Drayson Hill and William Mayo. So this, the players perform for the Duke's Wedding. And so this is the comic relief of the show, which is known for all Shakespeare shows. But it's also a very vital part of the show. So for all of the show, except for the very ending, the last scene, they are two separate entities. So there's the lovers and the Athenians, and then there's the players. And so it's usually the comic relief in between. But then in the last scene, they come together. And so the players perform a show for the lovers and the Athenians. And then the third clip you saw was part of Theater Foundations III, a class that I'm not a part, or Theater Foundations II, sorry, a class that I'm not a part of, though next year I will be a part of Theater Foundations III. So this was Green Eggs and Ham. So they are rehearsing for the OHS Theater Department Semester Showcase, which will be Monday 17th at 6:00 PM. And I guess I forgot to say this at first, but I am the vice president of the thespian troupe 8814. And then, yeah, like she kind of explained, I wasn't exactly the one who's supposed to be here, but I was already here and so I had kind of stepped in for the role. So thank you.
Thank you for doing so. Thanks very much for sharing that. It's a great, great performance. It's exciting to see something going on in the Performing Arts Building again.
Yes, it is.
There's currently also the variety show, yes, which is why I have to go back to the high school now.
The variety show is this Friday and Saturday, correct, Alex?
Uh, yes.
Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, potentially, yes. I know it was in the forecast, but that's this weekend and that is through our choir department. So they'll be hustling and bustling in the Performing Arts Center all week. So just proud of Alex and Mrs. Miller and all her students and Mrs. Steinball for everything they do for our kids.
Before Mrs. Steinball gets out of here, she's done some amazing things for our district. The robotics program is just one of those things. The food pantry is just one of those things. I don't know that, that we give all of the people credit that they deserve for the things that go really unidentified throughout our community. She has been an incredible asset in addition to our district. She's an incredible teacher, incredible person, does amazing things with our kids. We cannot appreciate her enough. Mrs. Miller is another. We built a $10 million Performing Arts Center. We haven't seen the likes of what Alex and his peers have done maybe in the history of theater performances in our district. It is amazing what happens when people have passion, people have love for the things that they do and we find a leader that can actually put them in the right place to do amazing things. So thank you to Mrs. Miller, who I assume is watching at home if she's texting you. So I assume she's watching at home. But Mrs. Steinball to you as well. Thank you so much for all that you do. We could not do what we do with our kids without the two of you. Thank you very much. And Alex, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Yes, yes. Okay, thank you all.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right, we are moving down to our action part of the evening. Dr. Cobb's is going to present our administrative contracts for approval. Just a reminder that salaries are yet to be determined until after the negotiating process is ratified.
Yeah, really, all that we're doing tonight is identifying that the contracts will be continued for all of our administrators. As we determined, I think, for the first year last year, building principals and central office staff would have a two-year rolling contract. All of our other administrators have a one-year contract. So this would just renew all of their contracts for the additional year.
And we have had these contracts and have been able to review them before this meeting. So is there a motion to approve the administrative contracts?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Oh, sorry, Susan.
Before we vote?
I would like to recuse myself, please.
Certainly. And I think you need to actually leave the room. All right. We now have five board members that will be voting on this issue. So all in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes 5-0.
Shanda, now you can come back.
Hope she didn't go too far.
She went a long way away.
All right, we are back with six board members present. And up next is our fee review. Dr. Cobb's has the fees for the 21-22 school year. And again, this is something we've had to review. Is there anything that you want to specifically add on?
The biggest piece of this is that our fees remain flat. And if you read the update, you can see why there are some differences in our fees and other districts' fees. But we feel like this was not a great year to increase any fees for anybody. And so we would leave our fees flat and maintain the current structure as we move forward into 21-22.
Is there a motion to approve the fees as presented? So moved.
So move. Go ahead, second.
All right. Are there any questions or discussion before we take a vote on this? All right, all in favor of approving the fees as presented, please raise your hand. And that passes 6-0. All right, up next are the personal handbooks. This is just a first read. There is no action to be taken on these tonight. Again, these are handbooks that we've had and already reviewed. But Dr. Cobb's, is there anything in particular you wanted to point out on any of those?
No, really, really small minute changes in the substitute handbook. It's just about making sure that the salary is appropriate, the number of contract days is appropriate, dismissal time is appropriate, contacts. On the classified, it is just about making sure that we change any unused sick leave to, or any unused personal leave will be moved over to sick leave. The only, the only change in the transportation handbook came on page 10 with a change to FEMA regulations. Prior to, if there was a tornado, they were asking people to get out of a bus and find a depression to lie in. FEMA is now indicating to stay in the bus. So make those changes for that. And then, of course, the board handbook, we put back in your hands. The only change I've made to this point is the date. If there are any discussions about changes that need to be addressed within the board handbook, we'd be happy to make those changes. If there are any discussions about changes that need to be addressed within the board handbook, we'd be happy to make those changes for you all.
And I think there was a date even deeper into the document that probably needs to be.
Yeah, okay.
All right, are there any questions for these? We will bring this for vote in our next meeting. Okay, well, then we will move on. Uh, Dr. Cobb's, just stay right there. Do you have an ESR update for us at this point?
Uh, I am sad to say that I do not. This is gonna be a part of the problem that we see with ESR funds. Is that the timetable for them to be reviewed and approved by the State Board of Education is going to really hinder our ability to make quick decisions with ESR funds. I have held off on, on reapplying for ESR II funds after some of the discussions that we had through negotiations and the changes now that, that need to take place within that application. Because I wanted to make sure they didn't get kicked out and for us to be a month down the road for the other pieces of the application. So, I will reach out to, to KSDE again tomorrow, find out where we're at in the, in the ESR process, how quickly we will know. They, they have indicated that if, that they have received our application. And to this point, we've not received anything that would tell us that there are any questions about our application or anything that we need to consider and, and needing to fix within our application. So, I'm not sure what that means, other than I know that they've received it and I, they've either not reviewed it or our application was good. So, we'll follow up with them tomorrow and figure out when it goes to the State Board of Education and, and when we might be able to apply for an update and how quickly we might get that taken care of from the backend. And then, we'll, we'll go from there as we continue to maneuver through the ESR piece of all of this.
Right, and I assume you'll update us in the update on Thursday?
Yes, I'll update you on Thursday.
Perfect. All right, next up, Dr. Cobb's is gonna speak with us about the end of the year celebration.
Yeah, I think we have something planned that'll be kind of fun. We initially talked about doing an, an end of year celebration at, at Forest Park. I've had some minimal conversations with the, with the city. Currently, they're not reserving any parks. I did reach out to Wendy Lee, I know she forwarded my email on to, to somebody else. And I haven't heard back from them. So, we went ahead and, and just moved it to Garfield so that we don't have to worry about whether or not we can fit into the, the city's calendar or not, given the issues that exist there. I don't think any of the restroom facilities or any of those things are open in, in city entities as of yet. So, we, we will host this at Garfield on the 28th. Students are out at 11 o'clock. We'll probably start meeting around 11:30. We have two food trucks that will be coming in and serving all of our staff lunch that day. We're, we're purchasing sodas and water and different drinks. And we'll have tables and chairs and, and everything set up. We'll do some fun things. We have some conversations tomorrow about possibly karaoke, I think Dean was gonna set up. Maybe some karaoke for staff at the end, which might be kind of fun. But anyways, we'll, we'll have some conversations about some fun things for our staff as we, as we finish up this year. But we'll also recognize our retirees. We'll, we'll recognize those with, with specific years of service. We'll recognize our teachers of the year. We'll recognize our Horizon winner of the year. We'll recognize our admin and director of the year. And, and we'll recognize our classified staff members of the year. So, we'll do some things and celebrate the successes of the year, celebrate the end of the year. Make sure that we have a, a great lunch and, and some camaraderie and fellowship amongst our staff. And then, get all of our staff back to the building for checkout and, and on to their summers. Get away from school, relax a little bit and get ready and prepared for a, a great new school year next August.
Great, thank you very much for that information. All right, moving on, we do not need an executive session for negotiations tonight.
I, I will just say that I will update everybody on the, the items that were discussed tonight to be noticed for negotiations. We'll make sure that we follow up and identify all the sections and subsections and get all the information ready for everybody. We'll put it in the update on Thursday, so as you can be aware of, of all of the things that we'll talk about over the course of the next few weeks.
Thank you. You all have been presented with a personnel report. Would somebody like to make a motion that we approve said report?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes 6-0. We are down to announcements.
Yeah, so, the announcements are basically the same. I want to, so, Senior Art Show, is it still on for May 12th?
Yes, that's next month.
Yeah, Wednesday?
Yes, it is. It's this Wednesday, I can tell you the time.
Okay. So, 5:45 to 6:45 is when, I just wanted to make sure that it was, it was still on. I did add one from last time, Top 5% Banquet is May 20th at 6:00 PM in the North Gym at, at OHS. Everything else is a, a long list of a lot of events that are gonna take place in the next 15, 14 school days. So, we're excited to, to finally be winding down, but there are a plethora of events that, that will be really exciting over the course of the next few weeks. And our students are excited to, to finish this up. I think our staff is excited to finish this up. I think those that have worked really hard to put on these last few events are really excited for the things that are, that are happening here at the end. Especially that we get to do some of these things here at the end. So, exciting times, looking forward to, to seeing all of our students be able to do these things here at the, the end of the school year.
Lots going on.
Absolutely. All right, I think we've covered everything. Is there a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes 6-0.
Thank you, everybody.